Order on this. One, please rise.
Why are we coming for you now? We are seeking your guidance and direction here at this meeting. What I pray for this nation, pray for our military, our leaders, both at the national, state and local level. That the decisions that are made will be in accordance with your will and under the guidance and direction of your Holy Spirit. I want to just thank you again for our freedoms and ask for you continue to protect us from those that might seek to undermine or to destroy this mission. And I pray out this Father in Jesus Christ's name and for his sake, and I pray all this amen.
Join me in the pledges of I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, of the nation.
Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
First order of business is presentations. We do have a presentation today. And I'll Susan Lane, let me, let me get the.
I've got one of my staff members here. I have two more, but you're part of a team here. So team effort, not just one person.
I want to thank our friend, Mr. Barbara. She hates. The likes for what they have done and achieved. This is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It was a very tough award from the government finance association. Takes a lot of work to get this. You don't get it every year. They put in a lot of effort this year and I want to thank them for keeping it. It requires a lot of reporting and a lot of openness and accounts and the effort on their part. I appreciate what they have done. Make us be distinguished among other, other cities.
Add to our transparency and so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next starter of business is to ask if there's anyone here from the public that would speak to council before we start our regular agenda. See now, there's no one signed up. Okay, well then we will proceed then with our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, the minutes of the March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three special meeting and workshop, review of our credit card statement, receive our monthly financial highlight report and review our quarterly investment report ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So move. Unless there are questions. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda as presented. People say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. There are none opposed, motion passes. Right, our, we've moved to our regular agenda action items. Our first item of business is to receive reports from Calhoun County appraisal district chief appraiser Jesse Hubbell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for here. I've got a brief report and a lot of statistics that I won't go over everything, but I've been going to Commissioner's Court, the school board and probably go end up going to the city of Cedar and Point Comfort as I'm able to and also Point Comfort, go down, visit the good folks down there. And it's all about taxes and appraisal, mainly appraisal first and then of course the taxes, that's, that's up to you guys. You, you get the the luxury of doing that. But anyway, there has been some questions from time to time, rumors, whatever. Why do values keep going up? Why do we do what we do? Things like that. And I just want to, to clarify some things as to why we do what we do. And it's all according to state law and there's a list of rules and regulations as long as your arm and, and probably your leg too, that we have to comply with each year. And section twenty-three dot oh-one of the Texas property tax code gives us the reason why our property is appraised at market value, how is market value determined? And I'll just read through some of this. And this is the shortened version of some of the things that, that we have to comply with. This is checked as otherwise provided by this chapter. All taxable property is appraised at its market value as of January first. Market value of property shall be determined by the application of general, generally accepted appraisal methods and techniques. If appraisal district determines the appraised value of property using mass appraisal standards, which we do, the, the value of property, the mass appraisal standard must comply with the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? The same or similar appraisal, appraisal methods and techniques shall be used in appraising the same or similar kinds of property. However, each property shall be appraised based upon the individual characteristics that affect the property's market value and all available evidence that is specific to the value of the property shall be taken into account in determining this property's market value. This leads to begs the question, what is market value? According to the definition, according to the state Department of Tax, so one dot, section one dot oh-four, market value means the price at which property would transfer for cash or its equivalent under prevailing market conditions. If A, exposed for sale in the open market for the reasonable time for the seller to find a purchaser. B, both the seller and the purchaser know of all the abuses and purposes to which the property is adapted and for which it is capable of being used and the enforceable restrictions on its use. And C, both the seller and the purchaser seek to maximize their gains and neither is in a position to take advantage of the exigencies of the other. And I had to look up exigencies about every time I see that word because it's not commonly used, but all it means is urgent need or demands. You're not under undue pressure. And of course, nobody's under pressure to buy a house that your wife or your husband wants, or even so. It happens from time to time. Anyway, that's a little bit of why we, what, what we do and why we do it. It's not that we sit around and talk to the mayor or city council and say, okay, how much value do, do you need? How much value do we need to raise? So you don't have to raise the tax rate or you can decrease the tax rate or anything like that. We don't, we don't make up what we do. It's all very it's lots of rules and regulations that we have to follow. It's not, it's, it's the state constitution. It's the state property tax code. It's the transportation code, if you can believe that. It's the water code. It's the city code. It's the government code. There's any number of, of regulations that we fall under and also the state comptroller's office. Anyway, on page three, and I think everybody has this handout, at least I hope you did. This is a history about, I think it's about a five-year history of what residential properties have been doing in Calhoun County. Here is specifically in the city of Port Lavaca. And this year, we're looking overall at about a twenty-two percent increase over last year in the market value of residential. Okay? And what's residential properties? Well, single-family dwellings, mobile homes with land. You have actually have, I think, four or five from time to time. It varies a little bit at what we call rural property that's actually within the city. And there's only about four or five of those against, but we count those as well. And then mobile home only, I've got that lumped in here as well. But overall, about a twenty-two percent increase in market value. And that connotes a transfer equates to about a sixteen percent rise in taxable values. Okay? That's not really counting your homestead yet. I think it was two thousand eighteen, nineteen, or maybe it was twenty when the city of Port Lavaca passed a regular homestead for everybody and that gave everybody quite a bit of a break. And you'll see that it'll be reflected in some of the statistics, some of the later, later pages where taxable value actually went down. Okay, so we always increase values. That's generally the case because real estate is an appreciating asset and, but it, the market ebbs and flows and we follow the market. If it goes down, we have to go down. Now, the caveat to that is we're looking at the prior twelve months and not the first three or four months of the year. Okay? So we're looking from January first all the way back to January first of the prior year. Everything in Texas. Almost everything in Texas is vagrant as of January first. There are certain exceptions, but that doesn't include single-family dwellings, which is, that's primarily what we're talking about in these statistics. I don't have statistics yet for commercial type properties and the other type properties of business, personal property. Those notices will go out sometime after this weekend, probably next or week, week after, somewhere along in there. Residential properties will, you'll be receiving your notices in the mail, notices of appraised value. Those will go out in this Friday and there's anyway, just, just about all the notices or I don't have any there are in in the city, there's probably over about four thousand or so, something like that, single-family residents, more or less. Okay? Excuse me, actually, there's three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five to be exact. That's, that's part of the stats that you have in front of you. But anyway, that's a, a five-year history about what they've done over the years. Overall, I looked at homesteads for twenty twenty-three. Average market value of an average homestead in the city of Port Lavaca, the market value is only a hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. The taxable value on the same, on that piece of property, average value is a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fourteen. Market value went up on average about twenty percent on the homestead property, but only about nine percent. Okay, on your taxable value. In Texas, there's a ten percent cap on homestead property. Value cannot go up more than ten percent per year. So that kind of takes the steam out of increasing, increasing prices in the marketplace. We're beginning to see what some of the other parts of the state have been going through. In fact, where they started sometime last year where values are pardon the term, they're going crazy. Some more, some areas more than others. There's parts of Port Lavaca that, that are we have to look at it here because the values keep increasing so rapidly. Fort O'Conner is another area that just, we can't keep up with the values.
So on this chart.
Yes.
Twenty percent is what it would go on, but it's capped at ten percent. So we can probably expect ten percent this year, ten percent next year.
Until it wipes out that cap on a home, on a home set that property. And if you, if you worked exploding from the back on page six, so I just ran a kind of an estimate and don't take this to the bank, okay? But if you kept the same tax rates for a piece of property that was three hundred thousand dollars. The value was three hundred thousand dollars last year with a twenty percent increase. The net effect would be about an eight point eight nine percent tax increase, which equates to about a hundred and ninety dollars, less than two hundred dollars over what they would have paid. And this is just an example. So the homestead really takes the steam out of escalating property, property values. So if you know your neighbor doesn't have a homestead and they qualify for it, then you might want to give him, you know, a hand and say, hey, you need to go visit the appraisal district or at least give us a call and so that we can look it up and see if you have your homestead exemption. We want you to have your homestead exemption and any other exemption that you qualify for. And there's several. You may be disabled. There's, there's exemptions for disabled.
Has the deadline passed for twenty twenty-three?
No, ma'am. No, you, you can back file up two years on a homestead. Now you can even file if you didn't, if you didn't own it in January. Yeah, this is crazy, but yeah, they, they're always doing, I don't want to say they, the state. Now you can have a partial homestead in that if you buy your house, say in the middle of the year, well, you get fifty percent of your homestead. We have to deal with that and it's, it is a constant pain in the neck. Because they certify value and then somebody comes in and it's in December. They filed the last day of December and get a partial homestead. Okay, well, that constitutes messes up your books, our books, but, but it's part of the job. That's what we do. Anyway, that's, this is just a, here are some of the examples of what's been happening in Port Lavaca. What's been happening? Well, I think it was two, twenty twenty, is that when you passed the homestead, which really helped? Okay, and
like there was a six percent.
Yes, that year there was a six, six percent decrease in taxable value. So usually when values go up, tax rates can come down, but it just begins and this is this is just looking at residential homesteads. We haven't, we haven't set the values yet on all of your other business, personal property, commercial, things like that. So the value overall may go up or down. But right now we're looking at about a twenty percent increase in market value or residential type properties.
And you're changing your cell phone number this week?
Yes, ma'am. We'll begin hearing the phone ring usually about three, four days. By the third day, people start coming in. Which is fine, that's, that's, that's what we do. And this is that time of the year and it gets very busy. And yes, we are shorthanded. And when we've got a new person that we're trying to train up, but it only takes about two years to train someone. But it's a very, very long, very expensive process sometimes, but we're, we'll make do. It's, it's not, not the first time I've been working shorthanded or we've been having to, we feel like we, we're cross-trained with with collections, a lot of ladies in the back that, that are appraisers also collect. So if there's a, a gap there, they can help out. Unfortunately, those that collect don't, they don't appraise. We're going to have to work on that. Yes, sir.
Hubbell, I did notice back in twenty nineteen, your, your collection, collection rate city-wise dropped below ninety-nine percent and most, most of them, yeah, all of them for that were ninety-nine percent or greater. You expect that number from twenty nineteen to go up as people go back and pay back taxes? Or would pretty much hang where it's at because that, that means more and more people can't afford their property taxes.
That's what, less than one percent?
That's, okay, that's in one percent of the population, but that's one, that's the one percent of the population is not paying their pop, property tax. Actually, altogether, it's, it's a little over a percentage of people that are not able to pay their property.
Okay, some of that may be sixty-five or older that have, I guess, opted out. They can file a defer and they don't pay their.
Okay, it's, it's not that, that they're, they're going to be in the rears and, and be collecting on this. It's
we can't collect at all.
I can see our population getting older.
Yes.
And then they'll start to be burning until and it's collected on the estate.
That's, that goes for the disabled as well. I mean, oh, some do pay, I guess, anyway, but that stops, it doesn't stop the taxes from accumulating, but it does stop any foreclosures, which personally, I'm not going to kick anybody that's disabled or over sixty-five that can't afford their maybe I shouldn't say that out loud, but I'm not going to kick them out of the house.
It's a tough thing to do, right?
And we try to work out if anybody wants to make payment plans, we try to work with them on that, whether they're over sixty-five or not.
So the ninety-one point six seven percent doesn't bother you because that's a little over eight percent?
Well, that's right now. And the collections get better as, as we approach July.
I got you. Thank you.
It goes, there's also a special consideration for disabled veterans.
That's correct. If you're a hundred percent disabled veteran, then you pay, and we may have some out there that haven't filed yet. You pay zero taxes.
Right, zero.
Anywhere.
My neighbor, they pay zero taxes because she's a disabled veteran. No taxes.
If you're, if you're not a hundred percent, and it has to be service related. If you're only partially disabled, there are exemptions for the partially disabled bed. There's all sorts of stuff out there that we, we can try to help you with.
And you know somebody that, that fits that category, be sure and try to get them informed about it because just recently we discovered somebody that.
Yeah, yeah. So any, anytime, you know, talk to your neighbors. And that's, and we're not out to get anybody. Pick up the phone, call us. We're here to help you and, and your neighbor, everyone.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. No, it's just your information.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. We'll move on to agenda item number two, consider approval, DLO contract number two zero oh-six-five oh-seven-one dash E one nine nine eight supplemental agreement number one, subcontract, subcontract for consultant services agreement with Civil Core LLC for material testing and inspection on the community development grant disaster relief in the amount project and the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Jody?
Oh, well, Mayor Council, recently we realized that the materials testing that, that we need to do on any kind of street projects was kind of overlooked in our contracts with Civil Core. And so we've done, they've done the work, but there wasn't any way to pay them for the work because it was not part of their contract. So, and it's clearly something that we want to do. We need to, to test the materials and make sure that, that the compaction of the streets are done in accordance with the plans. So in order to be able to pay them, we need to approve an amendment to their contract to add in this fifteen thousand dollars for the materials testing and inspection. Because as you know, Civil Court has their own testing company as opposed, and sometimes we'll, we may contract out with like TSI or something, but Civil Court has their own division that does that workforce. I did clarify with Randy with Civil Court today and looking at, actually, we've got a final inspection for phase one tomorrow. And right now it looks like that we're going to be, have about thirty-five thousand dollars left on that, that contract, even in counts and considering the thirty-one thousand, I think that we had approved a while back for an addition for lesser contracting for materials over end costs. And so that fifteen thousand can come out of that and still, we still have like twenty thousand left that we can probably put towards point repairs that we're going to need in phase two. And that's, that's because the length is taken for everything to get done. We really don't have a need to go back and add the saw that's in the contract. Because basically the grass is already grown and taken over. So I looked at it today and there really isn't a need for the expense of putting sawing. So we, we can save that in, in our construction contract that would help pay for this, in turn pay for this extra fifteen thousand dollars in in this material testing and, and inspection. And so we're recommending approval of this
I'll move.
It's your chance for it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second approving the yellow contract. One nine nine eight supplemental agreement for consulting services with Civil Core in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars as presented. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. You're none opposed, motion passes.
And, and to clarify that, should the handle for both phase one and phase two? Didn't have to do that again.
All right, we'll move to agenda item number three, consider award of construction contract for the rehabilitation of Chevy Chase Street project. Wayne?
Mayor Council. In lieu of this year's seal coat program, we have opted to rework Chevy Chase Street and then redo the curb and gutter San Antonio Street. Chevy Chase has the complaints for that street have outnumbered the repairs that we can do to it and it, it's just failed. So we decided to do that. And then the curb and gutter on North San Antonio Street has rolled to the point where it's in danger of injuring somebody or really damaging vehicles. And it's not draining correctly.
But Chevy Chase wasn't in our five-year or is it?
Well, it wasn't, not specifically, no. I mean, this, honestly, this was a street that was talked about being done in and then eight, but it wasn't ever done. And it, it, it's, we talked about it last year, but it wasn't specifically put into the capital improvement plan. Quite honestly, we just kind of overlooked it, but it's something that needs to be done. And, and, and honestly, we looked at, you know, what's available for seal coat and you know, there's, we're, we're basically to the point now that some areas, I mean, we really need to work on the curb and gutter before we go to the expense of putting a seal coat down.
What about the crack ceiling? Is that separate from seal coat?
Yes. Yeah, we, I mean, we still have money for that. Yes.
So move.
It'll, several complaints from the residents.
A lot of.
Jim probably got more than I did.
And, and Chevy Chase, I mean, if you go, it's, it's the worst of what's
terrible curb. Yeah, plum out of it. They rolled all the way out of the street.
And the North San Antonio curbs that we're opting to replace, we just seal coated in that neighborhood and now it's holding water in the in there and it's destroying the roads we just seal coated.
This is just for Chase, San Antonio?
Now, the road repair is just Chase. The curb, the curb is part of miscellaneous concrete work, which is sidewalks, driveways and other.
Now, on Chevy Chase, there is some point repair work on curbs included in that, but we're not I mean, last year or two years ago, we actually replaced a bunch of curb on one side of Chevy Chase and this project will replace, forget how many linear feet on the, on the east side that needs to be replaced too.
The seal coat program is a hundred and fifty thousand and this is
Yes.
What, two hundred and twelve thousand?
A hundred and forty-eight.
Seven or forty-eight.
It's sixty-five is from this. It's sixty-five is for miscellaneous concrete.
No, ninety-eight is for the steel code. Right now.
No, it's eighty-seven, eighty-seven, eight, twenty-three is for for Chevy Chase.
Okay, yeah. Yes, total.
When I've heard in some cities, they. The curve that's starting to roll up, they'll cut that out, that cut that, use a concrete saw and cut that that ridge out. Have you ever heard of that?
Yeah, but it doesn't solve any purpose, cause the the curb is just gonna continue to roll. The only way to.
Your thing, so.
Well, yeah, but then you take away the, you create more dangers, cause as you cut that area, your curb away, you're exposed to the rebar and. Aggreg- aggregate inside it, and it starts crumbling, and then it creates a hazard.
Yeah, so, so the work on San Antonio looks like it's about forty-one plus sixty-seven thousand plus. Sixty-seven hundred, I'm sorry, and thirteen hundred, so items A nine, A ten, and eleven is uh. Uh, or San Antonio, and the rest of this is um repairs. That are needed to areas where there's been a water leak or some sort of a utility repair that. Sidewalk or driveway needs to be repaired.
And there's, there's cost savings in lumping all the concrete work together. And on another note. Jody spoke with Sam Silva. To ins- to do uh hot mix instead of two cores. Would do, would be an extra thirty-three thousand dollars.
Also, let's back to my question of the crack scene, we're we're not sealing the cracks on the hot mix we're laying down the last few years, so I guess. I'm curious if we should have stopped that experiment and go back to two cores. If we're not gonna make, uh, my concern is we're not maintaining the hot mix roads.
Go back to what, Ian?
Well, yeah.
It's not a matter of not maintaining them.
Putting in, we're not maintaining them, they're cracking, and we're not throwing the cracks in, we we do some, but we don't do all of it.
What, what do you feel it do?
It's a.
Tried several different mixtures, I don't know.
It's important to remove those pipes, just kind of running on the track.
So, so we did hot mix, because if you maintain them, they last a lot longer than the co- two cores, that's what we were told initially.
Yes.
But if we don't maintain them properly, then we might as well go with the cheaper option, cause it's easier to put a seal coat at a two cores. It's more against the cracks, so I mean, I mean, it's, I guess I'm just curious, you know, if we're.
Well, I think, I mean, honestly.
Money wisely.
Uh, right, the, the answer to that is to do the crack seal. Yeah, it is. So, and I mean, we've talked about that, that we need to do this, but that's the.
The option we have right now is doing crack seal out of a barrel. Cause we don't have a machine that does cracks. And then we'll burn up two barrels in a week, and then we're waiting months, month and a half for the new barrels to come in.
Didn't didn't the arms before just come through and go down through.
I mean, you can, you, we could try to team up and try to hit it when tech stop coming, it's just. Um, I mean, it's that last week. Contracting in here, um, we can, we still need to look at that.
I've looked at renting a crack seal machine just to come through and knock all of that out. But each time I've looked at renting one of those, I have a tank full of oil that's for patching and seal coating. And nowhere to put the crack seal. Which is different.
Oh, so I guess my point is if we're spending thirty thousand extra for for.
Well, 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 let me, but let me back up.
We're not maintaining it, then we're not doing ourselves any good.
Well, but I mean, the other thing in my mind is that this application, it's because we are cement stabilizing the base. Then if we were to put hot mix in, it is, in my opinion, it's basically for aesthetic purposes. It's when we're ha- we're not stabilizing the base, we're using just limestone, and we're not cement stabilizing it. Then in those cases, yes, there's a structural element uh um that's available with adding inch and a half or two inches or, yeah, two inches of hot mix. That is needed, because we're not spending the extra money to to cement stabilize our, our base. And so it does add structural um, a structural integrity to our cross section. But if we're actually cement stabilizing our base, then. The, the need for the extra, extra uh structural uh capacity to the cross section isn't as important, in my opinion. So that's why, what if we're actually cement stabilizing some grade like we're doing here, it's less important to worry about the. The hot mix as adding structural capacity.
Okay.
It's kind of my thinking. But to your point, anything that we do hot mix, yes, we need to um to maintain it. Or make the decision that at some point in the future, I mean, we're look, doing the hot mix for structural, for structural. So another option is that we, you know, once it 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 cracks and we, if, you know, we didn't wanna crack seal it. You could put a hot, a a seal coat on it at that time, but it's still, still, you got an inch and a half or two inches of hot mix. It is a structural element that's greater than that inch or inch and a half to two inches if it were limestone. Makes sense.
Well, makes sense, but I think when it was presented to us, that it's a, it's a better smoother.
It is.
So that's, it's a nicer texture, that the citizens like it better.
And that's.
Wasn't presented as a structural issue, but we always said it costs more money to put it down, and if you maintain it, supposedly it lasts longer.
Well, I mean.
For an entire refill.
Well, anytime for me, it was a structural issue, cause that, that's, that's my, that's my, my opinion. But, no, I agree that we need, you know.
We're gonna eventually put a seal coat over the top of it anyway. If it's not a structural issue, you might as well just do.
Correct, but it, and that's, that's why, in my opinion, what we're doing here, I wouldn't recommend we spend the money for hot mix. Because we're cement stabilizing our substrate. And and essentially, we're doing the same thing we did on sea scrape, sea escape in two thousand and seven. Escape. This is the same, same spec.
I like the hot mix better if we maintain.
Sure, but, but I mean, but that's, I mean, we're, we're only spending, I say, oh, we're spending eighty-two thousand dollars on it, but to be another thirty-three thousand. On that same section, that's just, you know, yeah, at some point.
Every base that's supported in.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
And so, we were just recommending the award to Silver Construction for the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty cents.
Whose district is this?
That would be. Yes.
Think I seconded that.
I didn't get a second.
And you second?
Yes, I volunteer.
Forty-eight, four hundred and eighty-five.
Forty-eight, forty-five, forty. For the rehabilitation of Chevy Chase Street project as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, you're none opposed, motion passes. Okay, we moved to agenda item number four, consider the request of Sylvia Chopa for a variance request to chapter twenty-six. Manufactured housing and recreational vehicles for the placement of a manufactured home to be placed at five fifteen South Anne Street Lot Two. Personal ID one seven two seven oh, Derek.
Sorry.
And Mrs. Toppe.
Oh, okay, good, uh, Mayor Council, uh, in your pocket, you have um. There was a request for variance. Place a manufactured home on a vacant lot next to um five fifteen South Anne. Ladyboard did discuss this, uh, but uh, and they did state that their concern was with our ordinance change. Uh, that property did not have a manufactured home in the past. And also, it's uh twenty-four years old, which, uh, you know, under ordinance, it's supposed to be ten years newer. But they recommended denial of it. Uh, manufactured home in question was actually right next door to where she wants to place it. You wanna move it over?
This one.
And it, does this meet the fifty percent rule or not?
No.
Well, um, there's not, in our ordinance, it states that um. If there wasn't a manufactured home there, then the kill, that's where it places her.
Yeah, we, we changed that.
Right.
We did go back and look.
And and considered that, and so even under.
There are like seven within the block, there are like seven other. Mobile homes that are even older than that.
I think when we were looking at it during the meeting, I think we found two in the area.
There's, there's one across the street, and there's one almost next door, but then.
I think it might be four.
If you look at the picture, you can count a bunch.
I know that by definition, in the old ordinance, old ordinance, by definition, the block was one street. It wasn't a whole block.
It has to be decided somewhere. That's where the ordinance case.
She's on Zoom.
Do you wanna say anything?
Yes, uh, I do wanna say something, uh, this mobile home that I purchased. I, it belonged to the county, it was my understanding, it belonged to the county. This mobile home went through auction, I bought it in November before you knew your ordinance was revised. So I bought it in November, under the impression that I could move it, you know, because I had already, I already had the, the lot. There, and I went ahead and I put the utilities on there. Uh, had the utilities connected, and then it's come to this time at this point. The reason I hadn't done anything, been able to move it, is because there was problems with the title. On the mobile home, even though it was owned by the county, the proper paperwork hadn't been filed. So I'm asking if you would please consider grandfathering this mobile home in, it's in excellent condition. It's the mobile home just right across the courthouse, right across the courthouse, that they want it moved as soon as possible. And I'm telling them I can move it as long as it's, it's right there where I own a lot, it's a, it's the next block right there on Anne Street. And there are several mobile homes within that, that area there, that are much older than, than the mobile home that, that I purchased. The mobile home is in excellent condition.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, did you, did you confer to anybody with the city before you purchased that mobile home to make sure it would be able to be moved there?
I entrusted on the. The people that were auctioning at all, she advised me that it could, that she was uh. Um, communicating with uh the county judge, I believe is Meyer. I believe that.
Sorry, but we're the city, we're not the county, it has to meet our requirements.
Yes, I understand. It's just that it's gonna be. I mean, I'm, I understand that they, they say, well, you can move it to a uh mobile home park. But I already have the vacant lot, I already have the utilities connected. Moving it elsewhere, it's gonna be very costly, I've already uh tried to get some information, I did, and it's. Gonna cost me quite a bit.
Is that, that's even old enough that we can't place it in a mobile home park, isn't it? It should be placed in many fact.
Can be still, okay.
So it meets out those requirements, it's just the location is the problem.
Well, and also the age, um, council decide, um, agreed to um. Go no older than ten years for the manufactured home to be placed on that property. And this one is twenty-four years old.
But hasn't that been the rule for some time now?
Yes.
The ten-year rules have been in place. That's not new. Yeah, and and the fifty percent rule, like I said, under the old ordinance, it still wouldn't have met, but now the ten-year rule has been in place for a long time.
I just feel like we have, I mean, we have these in place for a reason. And if we don't abide by them, then we're not gonna, we're not gonna ever be able to enforce it.
But you make an exception, somebody else comes along.
That's the problem, once you make an exception, then you have five more that want you to make an exception, and that's the problem that we have. It's not our wish to make a hardship on anybody's.
Well, no, we don't want. How do you do there?
Make an exception, you're opening yourself up.
He was.
Yeah. There's, there's.
This would be the newest one.
Yeah, but, but again, with the, the, well, there's twelve blocks, so you'd have to have six. I mean, even if you look at the whole block, you'd have to have six existing.
And she definitely have a variance.
Yes.
I remember their older trailer, five or six older trailers.
There was one nearby.
No, I mean, that's just far, I mean, there's never been a trailer.
Think that, I think that I'm gonna have to go with our recommendation from our planning board. I mean, that's what we have our paperwork to do and stuff, to research this. And uh, I just feel that this should have been honestly looked at better.
Yes.
And it should have came to the city and asked all the questions.
I, I agree. She was under the impression of your county being.
Known the rules and she took it for it. She just assumed that they.
Yeah, and I, I mean, not bad for her, but I do agree with you that. And I did, I did speak with um Judge Meyer to see if he was aware of anything, and he was not. Um, he did speak with Chenier and the auctioneer at least told him, he wasn't aware of anything, but yes, somebody may have said something that they. Uh, you know, not authorized to say, but.
It does.
Judge wasn't aware of anything.
Make a motion that we go with the planning board's decision, I can't honestly feel good to say that the planning board made a recommendation to us. It doesn't meet our city requirements, and then we're gonna go against that. That's just my opinion, I'm sorry for any hardships, but we have, we have our guidelines.
Nice motion is to deny the variance request.
Yes, that's my motion.
Yes, correct. Basically, just upholding the.
Is there someplace in that area where she could?
I mean, it would have to be in a mobile home park. I mean, I guess, yeah, cause we know, or outside of city limit, outside of city limits, or if there was a place where there's existing manufactured homes.
Yeah.
Switch it out, but uh.
Just chop up, are you planning on living in that home?
No, I plan on living in that home.
Uh, you live next door to that, is that correct?
No, I don't live, my daughter's living next door.
Oh, okay.
That mobile home, I purchased it for myself to live next to her, to have it moved right next to her.
For the grandfather to a porch, it would have had to been a full size of city, and this is the life. Right, so I don't pay, we, unfortunately. A straight variant. To do a variance, probably have to get her to. Check with all the neighbors. Make sure there's no opposition. Are you saying that? If we say, not right now, but if she talks with the neighbors and they say it's okay.
That's an option, but right now, you have a motion pending to deny the.
That's a whole nother.
Oh, no, 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 no. How far are you gonna go?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking.
That would have been an option.
Information.
Like I say, I don't wish any hardship on anybody, I just think that if we don't, you know, I mean, I can't help it, uh. You know, we should have been contacted ahead of purchasing, we should have made sure it was acceptable here, I know it was here in the city, but. That's, I mean, that's from years ago, you know, I mean, things have changed and. I mean, I, I just feel like if we make a change now, might as well just change it from now on, cause it's, that's what people are gonna want. And we'll never get, you know, that'll, it'll never change.
Well, and it wasn't just the recent change either.
That's correct.
I mean, this is, it doesn't meet any, it wouldn't have met the previous ones either.
Yeah.
Okay, Jerry's motion. So we have a motion in a sec. Denying the request of Sevilla Chop Up or Variance, uh, to check the twenty-six manufactured housing and recreation vehicles. Replacement of a manufactured home at five fifteen South Anne Street. As presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? One opposed. Two. And so, uh, the request is denied. Vote of four to two. Okay, we'll move then to agenda item number five, consider recommendation of the planning board for approval of a conceptual apartment complex. The Cilio's Real Estate Living to be located at two oh six Benorden Street, Blessing Game subdivision. Lot one, uh, one point five nine nine acres property I'll be there is number eight, one, one, four, three, Derek.
Mayor Council in your packet, um, you see the conceptual plan that, um, Mr. De Solis provided us. For consideration. It's gonna be fifty-three units, they'll have a shared washer, jar, laundry room, I mean. Planning board really liked the idea, thought it'd be, it'd be a great, uh, tribute to that area.
So is this where Blasson Ham's in, west?
Yeah.
So lumberyard, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Where the old lumberyard is.
Yeah, across the road behind that Ameriplex or whatever, straight behind there.
Across from where Miss Lisa.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, girl.
Oh, yeah. Make that area look a lot nicer, right? These like efficiencies or what? They're efficient.
Are these little bungalows or something? I mean, they're, they're, yeah, they're just e- efficiency units.
Space, kinda like a suite in a, in a hotel, um, they'll come with a king size bed, or I think a king size bed or, uh, two doubles. It's just one room, one big room.
They have like.
So all of these are the. It said like a loft.
Are we good on all the utilities over there?
Invest quite a bit, he's gotta bring a six-inch water line in.
Oh, okay. He's aware of the infrastructure, I just needed to, uh, take care of the.
Family, ask location, ask. Just approving the location and that doesn't, you know, they could still have to buy by all of.
I have a question, all these on this, on that figure, are these parking areas?
Surely it's a parking spot, so just checking, making sure.
And this has been approved by anybody?
No, I mean, then all we're doing, all we're doing right now is saying that this is a good space. Apartment complex, this is his con- concept. And in fact, you know, we did initially, he came with like sixty units. And we said, well, we know, we didn't have enough parking for that, so he's cut it down to fifty-four. I mean, bottom line, he still has to comply with all the other ordinances and we're, we're in the process of working with him.
We pointed that out to him.
He already has the land statement.
Little bungalow houses, I mean, it's not there. So, so are these, how many people would be in each apartment last? When he said they're like two.
One to two people?
I'm just wondering, don't they have to have the two parking spots per unit?
It's one and a half.
This looks, so that meets all the correct parking and everything, okay.
That's why you had to reduce the number of, uh, units. I got to, to make it fit.
Like I said, your, your action tonight doesn't do anything. Him having to meet all the others.
Yeah.
Hasn't got together with that little committee you have. Yes, we had an initial meeting to kinda go over the.
I don't know what it's called.
Development Committee.
Development, yes.
And that's where we kinda identified, you know, what he's gonna need to do for utilities and.
So does he have any idea when he's gonna start?
I don't know, did he, I mean, I know he's got to do some work, I mean, I think we, we, we did recommend, drainage is another issue.
It's another one, there's not a street, it's, it's all gravel.
There's, I mean, there's, uh.
There's a street, but no curbs, I'm looking at it right here.
Basically, yeah, I mean, he, we made sense to him on how he can, um. Apply, try, try to get an easement across some adjoining property to get to Half League for drainage. Because if he tries draining. Or back there, it's not gonna go anywhere, he really needs to get it out to Half League Road. We don't wanna go into.
You don't wanna go where?
You don't wanna, he doesn't wanna go into the railroad track, that would be very expensive. Just the concept, concept, uh, plan that this would, is approved for a, an apartment complex. Based upon this.
Approving the conceptual apartment complex. Plan as we, and approving the recommendation. That's the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. None opposed, motion passed.
Yes, I think if it comes out like that, it'll be really great, especially in that neighborhood.
Promote some other people trying to do some things and clean up across the street. We'll move on to agenda item number six. Consider first reading of an ordinance G dash two dash two three. Of the city of Port Lavaca amending the code of ordinances, chapter thirty-six signs, providing severability, providing a repealing clause and providing an effective date, Derek.
Mayor Council, uh, in your packet, uh, in the memo. Um, it shows what, um, changes we recommended, uh, the ordinance, it's on ordinance. I think the main thing is, um. Um, abandoned signs, um, once they cease for hundred and eighty days, they're considered abandoned and shall be removed.
And the flat banners, the, I mean, pennants.
Let's see, we included, uh, yeah, definition pennants. Um, on the height requirements, uh, if you have any questions on the definitions, please let me know, but. Uh, these are all the, the, the changes that we recommended for, in the addition of definitions. Particular signs.
What about the height requirement you were gonna say?
Okay, on the height requirement, uh, if you look on page sixty-one of your packet. Um, section thirty-six, thirty-six. Uh, planning board recommended allowing thirty feet on state highway thirty-five and twenty feet elsewhere in town.
But the thirty feet's not a change. No, it, it is a change, it, but we, but we, we, we kind of. Generally approved that when we made the variance, I think to prosperity, but we never actually put that in order, so that's what we're doing now. It was twenty feet.
Yes.
We had agreed to that, that, you know, the planning board had recommended and, and we agreed that on thirty-five, it would be. At thirty feet, but it's never been reflected in the ordinance itself.
Really, it used to be. Well, we moved it from sixty to thirty.
It was twenty feet, right?
It was twenty feet. Uh, in Prosperity Bank, they requested a thirty foot.
And I know it was thirty because Tim and I went out to all the signs and measured before Water Burger asked for that variance.
At some point between then and when we got here, it got changed to twenty, cause no. The laser thing would only go twenty-five feet and I'm the other five feet, so we stood at every. Exactly five foot.
I mean, the one that was on Unicode said twenty feet.
That's, that's what I remember, I, I'm sorry, I've been reading so many different ordinances. Uh, they did recommend to go with the height of whatever Prosperity Bank gives. Uh, for the state highway.
Did they take advantage of that, Derek? Don't know, is that thirty feet?
But they, they.
They, they, uh, went with our variance.
Yeah. That's not bad, it's not.
Well, if you go through Lockhart, Lockhart's are all thirty feet, cause you, I mean. We, we, it was about that same time we were discussing it here that I happened to drive through to go to Austin, they were all. So I was driving down the road like.
Walmart and you look across it there, that palm tree that they planted, it's in their, real nice sign on the building. Till you get out there, it's like it blocks.
Burger King says twenty, yeah, I could tell.
Emotionally approved.
Second. Top thirty.
I mean, I wanna e- explain that, uh, on the pennant signs, I guess, it's frustrating. Right now, the pennant signs, they, we have an annual permit, right?
Correct.
And so they have to re, to be up it once a year. Um, that they, and right now it states pennants, or you can put one every twenty-five foot. Frontage.
Now, Jody, is this going to, I hate to, to bring this up. Is this gonna affect the rotary flags?
No, I mean, American flags are not considered a pennant or anything, no. If it's an American, if it's an American flag, doesn't count as a pennant.
There's also rotary flags at the bottom of them. Okay, I just wanna make sure. No, I, I just wanna, I don't, cause you know, some, like Russell gets like ten of them and they're like this far apart.
Again, like we talked about in the workshop, we didn't really want to, we didn't wanna really severely limit the number. We were more concerned with making sure they kept them in good shape, but again, to, to comply and be able to. Um, apply for this scenic, um, Texas, we have to give a limit.
Yeah.
In discussing with the planning board, they felt it was fair to say one for every twenty-five feet.
Oh, straight frontage.
We, in the workshop, we said two are every hundred feet.
Right, no, yeah. Cause we were looking at maybe, you know, maybe two, three or four for the first two hundred feet or a hundred fifty feet, and then one per, after that. Their recommendation was, basically, uh, we found what the, the city of Portland has, which is just, they allow one for every twenty-five feet.
Fifty-two foot lot will be able to have three signs.
Well, they'd be able to have, uh, one, two, I would. Think so.
Well, I'm just, that's a clarification.
Yeah, that's a clarification, if it's, if it's a. Fraction there, every fifty feet or.
Every twenty-five.
Every twenty-five.
So, so fifty-two foot lot would be able to have three, one in each corner.
So have two.
So we need to clarify if you can, if you.
So you could put one in each corner, corner and one in the middle?
Yeah, it'd be twenty-five feet.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, just to begin, when it's over consistent going forward.
Yes.
All right.
And, and another reason for increasing the number was, uh, I kept thinking about the bait shops, wanted to make sure they stayed in compliance as well, so.
But again, this is a first reading, so, I mean, I know I haven't had a chance to read every little word to make sure. It's what, thinking is, and I will be doing that, I encourage us all to do that and make sure that. We're all happy with what we, you know, for the second.
The bait shops will have to come in and get a permit. Oh, I'm sorry, the bait shops will come in and get a permit, they.
Any, any of the pennants, yes. But then the next agenda item, we have a fee, but it's a normal fee.
Yeah, and I will mention on, uh, page sixty, number seven. Jody and I discussed that and we talked about, uh, going in and taking that out as well.
Cause I don't know what it means. I don't know what you're saying, so.
Isn't that the same thing as a pennant?
I don't know, I don't know, why, um.
I think the intent was, uh, for advertising for crawfish, you can only have one crawfish pennant.
That's a, and I don't care.
I don't think that's a concern of ours either, so, yeah, no.
Two number sevens.
To include removing item seven. Thirty-six dash seven.
Under thirty-six four, there's two sevens. And thirty-six four, renumber.
Thirty-six four, it did get numbered, right? Starting with the number.
If you were missing the part.
Thirty-six four should be what?
Renumbered.
One, two, three, S, starting with one, yes. It's got two number sevens, Mandy.
Or that's with number four. Just renumber it. Yeah, just renumber.
Bottom line, we're just correct to make sure we have.
Well, that's on the memo.
I'm on the axle, yeah.
Well, just, just proofread for all, just kinda proofread. I think there, it is different on the memo versus the actual. I'm on the actual ordinance. Proofread, correct.
So we have a motion and a second.
So, don't say thirty-six seven.
Just say proofread.
Proofread and pick number.
In the first reading.
Is that gonna proving the first reading? G dash three dash, three in the city of Port Lavaca amending the code of ordinance. The, after thirty-six signs. Section thirty-six dash seven to thirty-six signs. And it's.
Just need to proofread the whole thing.
Make necessary corrections, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Not opposed, motion passes. Move to agenda item number eight, consider first reading of an ordinance G dash four dash two-three of the city of Port Lavaca amending the code of ordinances. Chapter forty-two subdivisions and class article. Seven group housing, commercial development section forty-two to one sixty, minimum design standards adding. Eye landscaping, providing for severability, providing for a repealing clause and providing for an effective date, Derek.
I think you skipped.
He's gifted.
Nobody stops you.
You don't have to read it when we actually get to it, cause you already read it. Okay, I probably read it wrong, cause I was reading that one. Nobody noticed that either, Mandy got, Mandy got it right, though. Okay, agenda item number seven, consider first reading of an ordinance G dash. Three dash two-three in the city of Port Lavaca amending the code of ordinances, part two, index A, fees, rates and charges, chapter thirty-six. Signs, section thirty-six dash seven, to bury signs. Section E, banners, flags, pennants and inflatables and providing an effective day, Derek.
Mayor Council, uh, this is, uh, the permit that, uh, Ms. Weaver was talking about, um. Looking to, it's a twenty-five dollar fee per calendar year.
Whatever pennants they want.
But that's not per pennant, that's per.
Per property.
You're talking about even, uh, like the ones they put up, all out there, right, out by the roadway, if they put this flag.
Here, if in January to December, or is it? Be notified, Jody, or what? Will y'all like notify them of that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, once, once the ordinance.
What about the little guy out there swinging his bill and then he passes out and he gets up, starts swinging that.
Talking about the inflatable type?
Like the ones I do for gaming furniture and stuff.
I don't think we've even addressed those.
We haven't had enough of this thing we can. The human out there uh, doing the cartwheel. So we have a motion and a second approving the first reading, reading of ordinance G dash three dash two three of the city of Port La Vaca, mending the code of ordinance. And it's a fees, rates and charges, chapter thirty six signs, section thirty six dash seven. As presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, same sign. Not opposed, motion passes. Now we'll get to agenda item number eight. Consider first reading of an ordinance G dash four dash two three of the city of Port La Vaca, mending the code of ordinances. Chapter forty two subdivisions and plats, article seven, group housing and commercial development, section forty two to one sixty. Minimum designs adding five landscaping, providing severability, providing a repealing clause, providing an effective day there.
Mayor, council, uh, in your pocket, you have the memo for a, a brand new landscaping ordinance. Uh, this is for that scenic city. Um, application. See, it mainly, it, it addresses non-residential properties. Um, it'd be new or any major remodels or uh, redoing a parking lot would be included. It's over fifty percent. Improvements, the exceptions would be for, this is, this does not include for a single family or duplex housing. Um, basically it requires each property, any development has to have ten percent landscaping. And seventy percent of it has to be uh, basically in the front. The exception, the, yeah, the exception is um, for apartment complexes that are similar projects, um, some of the, some of the. Landscaping can be on the interior of the property.
Can you say it's in the front? Are you talking about the street side?
Yes, sir. It specifically says on their street.
Again, I mean, it, it, this really is not very restrictive. It's, it's basically generally what um, a lot of our. You know, developers have been doing on their own. And so, um, this just modifies it and it says. This is what we expect.
One of the big requirements on it is the subsurface irrigation and/or hose attachment within seventy five foot landscape. Scans landscaped area. Um, and then as far as the maintenance, they basically have to keep it.
Maintained.
Maintained. There's no time limit or anything.
Yeah, that was a, a subject we discussed with the planning board and they kind of went back and forth and they're the ones. Just gotta keep it maintained.
But the main concern was, and I've seen this in the past, um, if the city does put in a one-year deadline or maintenance time period. Then after that one year, companies will quit taking care of it and just goes to nothing.
Oh, it goes to nothing, yeah.
Yeah, everything does.
So, okay, do we, uh, is there an action we have to take on this, like?
This is a first reading. So, clear the first reading, a- again, we'll make sure, double the spelling and everything. It's both kinda put together. Pretty quick.
Didn't hear the motion. Okay, so we have a uh, motion approving the first reading of an ordinance, uh. G dash four dash twenty three, the city of Port La Vaca, mending ordinances, chapter forty two subdivision plats. Article seven group housing, commercial development, section forty two to one sixty minimum design standards adding. Five landscaping as presented, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, same sign. Opposed, motion passes. Hey, our next agenda item is uh. To retire and to close sessions. Council want to take a break before? For, for a while. Hey, that's a unanimous vote there. Yeah, so I don't wanna, don't wanna stress anybody. I know, you got it, stay here.
Well, I have to read this up and set your pressure five five one four seven one two.
This.
Government. Okay, now you can.
All right, so we put this at seven fifty three.
Okay, and so um.
Finish breathing.
So can we bring in here as well?
Oh.
Let's discuss it first.
Oh yeah, I agree.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
At this time I will announce that City Council has completed its closed session on this the tenth day of April twenty twenty three at eight thirty o'clock P M. And uh I'll also announce that uh our move agenda item number ten where we will take action on anything deemed necessary coming from closed session and there is nothing necessary to take action on. So at this time I could entertain some moves.
Yeah, I got Ken and Jim.
Let's go. It don't make any difference.
All right, so we have a motion in the Secretary of General, all that favorite thing. Name signed, renew motion passes.
Those are those were speakers, I think.
Yes.
Have a good time.
He always do look at there's any of phonies.
Yeah, you know.
This.